We're praying before our meeting and I'll lead this in this part. Lord, we just thank you for this day that you've given each of us. We thank you for the blessings of life that you that you give us each day. And Lord, we just pray that we we thank you for our emergency services, our EMS, our volunteer firemen, our law enforcement. God, we just pray that you pray for your protection over all these men and women that served in these capacities. And God bless them for wanting to do the job for us here in Hart County. Lord, just thank those who may not be feeling well tonight, Lord. You just be with them and their bodies that breathe out well. We just pray, Lord, that you would be with us during this meeting. We just thank you for the privilege of living here in Hart County. And we thank you for our soldiers, past and present, that have made many sacrifices. Some of them even their lives to for us to be able to come to a meeting of the county and be able to discuss business and to be able to live in a county that is in a free nation. That I will pray. Amen. Let's all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We call the order. Our meeting made tonight, twenty twenty-three meeting. First on agenda, I'd like to welcome each one here, whether you're here in person or watching H T C Channel three or our Hart County Board of Commissioners YouTube channel. And we did get a report that everything went well with YouTube channel last week, last meeting. So maybe things are gonna go well again tonight. But we we do want to welcome you here. First on the agendas, the proof agenda, do we have any?
One violation under New Business Recreation Online Registration Software.
I'm not motioning for the agenda.
Okay. All right, thirteen E under New Business Recreation Online Restoration Software.
I'm not motioning for the agenda.
We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. I'm in favor. It's four O vote. Commissioner Brown is not only out of town, but he is out of the country tonight. So we just pray for his safe travels, but he'll be with us the next meeting. Next on the agendas, proof minutes, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Any additions or corrections to those? We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? Did not recall for vote. I'm in favor. So it's a four O vote. So we'll move on down to remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities. We have done listed tonight, do we? Okay, so we'll move on down, reports of constitutional office department heads. Ms. Kim, if you have any. Okay, we'll move on down to county administrators report.
In the monthly financial report, April this year, we had annual revenue of seven hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred seventy dollars. Expenses were one million, one forty-one, eight ninety-five, which was a little bit high for a lot of monthly stuff. The revenue versus expenses deficit of three hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. And then to add there, we drove out three million six hundred fifteen dollars, five hundred and five hundred fifty-six dollars. Real profits of ninety-eight thousand, it was just a normal break twelve billion, December, January. Laws came in three fifty-two, five twenty-five. EMS came in one oh three, five fifty-one. Vehicle tag fifty came in one seventy-one, six oh four. For the year, about thirty-five percent overall collection for just counting this league, we took dollars for the fourth year. Our expenses were around about seven percent under at this time for fiscal year. If I had any questions, leave that in. That's all I have on this. And one other announcement, we're gonna have a large meeting with the cities. We set the date for that on the guest afternoon, June the twentieth, five thirty here from this building. And I'll send notifications out tomorrow to the cities. I hope it met us all there.
All right. As far as chairman's report, I was asked to announce about the Humane Society's benefit. It will be the at the, it's called the Hartle Lakeside Music Festival, be May the twenty-eighth. From four to ten P M. And on the schedule, they have the Tams, Reservoir Dogs, Sticky Tamp, and Phil Duncan. And that'll have vendors and children activities at this event. So if you wanna support the Humane Society and listen to some good music, there's an opportunity for you. But and we'll be talking a little bit more about that later on. That's all I have. Chairman's report. District one, Commissioner Bennett. I don't have to thank this gentleman as chairman. District two, Commissioner Teasley.
Colonel, I have one thing here about Long Point in there that there's a sign there, Gabe Clay's head is broken and laying on the ground. And these are the legs. And it might not be no bad idea to put one of them signs on both sides of the road. And this is on the right side coming down. And to me, it would be one on the other side, too. And I know we got like stop, stop the head signs down here facing pretty good. And one other thing I had, out riding around the grass at Gum Ranch needs to be cut down there out there. Looks like it might have started or something, maybe or whatever. And also when the grape trees going around patching roads, there's some potholes down there that need to be, not many, but a couple that might need to be patched, like down here near the where the Tiki Dock is.
Oh, in the parking lot?
Yeah, in the parking lot.
Okay, we'll move on. District five, Mr. Dorsey.
Just before everybody knows, I think I mentioned this last meeting, but I've been pushing the D O T for these roads to get destroyed in the dolman area. But it's free to being out in Spire Pass, I mean Farm Road is a little shot. Blackers Bridge Road is taking a beating, Blackers Road, Akey Lunch Road, Lieberdamm Farm Road. It's just, it's all that. But just so everybody knows, we are pushing the D O T. And I still got how I'm buying my.
I got one comment on the way to home dollars after then. I'll be making a list of all the roads, sending them in to the L N E to prevent it in, in confidence to prevent it from popping. He called me this afternoon, he said, ready to make a picture for that.
I got some pictures for him.
Okay, but that that isn't worth it anymore. It has to be funded through L N E. But.
What's?
Rest is.
Thirty percent match, we should not have to.
Again, that's an argument we're gonna make in the latter period. And it shouldn't affect our budget, they won't make money. That's the problem. I got that phone call wait just a minute.
That's all I can say. Well, is there any kind of, and that bridge was supposed to be done by the end of May. Is that still on schedule or is it in July?
The term was in July. I'm also like, can't do July.
Okay, I'd like to look at you. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to old business, twelve A, be awarded. Repeat it. You got it next there, the amounts of the cost and for the brightening, milling, striping. So we don't have one bid, this shouldn't be a hard decision to make.
Right, and the reason I think.
Unless we want to put it up for rebid.
It's a public, you kind of understand why the public, if you want to bid, this is a relatively small, small job. And it's keep paying the season now for everybody and more than likely, it's harder now if you didn't want to take it down. And move all our stuff around, it's a small job.
This is about half of what we done in the past.
Correct, there's probably increasing, about eighty percent increase in cost.
I'm not motioning for the water. Big road paving to stratton zones, you know, consists of Walpole, Wilford Road. Pile Church Road will be both widened and resurfaced. Coldwater Road and then airline Dolman Road, the hatched mill, intersection fifty-one down to Alexander Ray Road. One other thing that I think, striping is also included in this, but we need to put some rubber strips down on some of these intersections, especially Run Church Road, running up to.
Yeah, we can bring that in if you want.
Yeah, I thought we had striping on Run Church Road as well.
That's under the. Budget, yes. This is the old, this is pretty old.
I'm not that much.
All right, yeah, unless you remember Mr. Dorsey's second, by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. I'm in favor. It's four O vote. All right, now we'll move on down to Hart County Village proposal. And I know that we have been involved with this some weeks now. And we've looked at this every which way we could look at it. But my understanding, the way my discussions have been, it's it's not gonna be a project that county's gonna be able to support as far as the moratorium goes. Now, if we had, I I watched the city meeting the other night and I I learned something there that it wasn't gonna be annexed before any construction started. That would've been great. That would, that would put them under their regulations on what and how things could be built. But with the county with no regulation as far as multifamily, because we do not have sewer, there's no need really for us to have multifamily ordinance or regulations. So, and so I saw that in a, in a, I signed up that there's gonna be that, able to annex it. But my understanding of this resolution cannot be worded to where we can annex prior. So like I said, I'm sorry, but I just don't see a way that the county would be able to be able to do this in a way that would be, you know, as far as a regular transition or a regular business. Because most of this stuff comes up to us as an annexation prior, you know, and then everything falls together. But it is on the agenda. So I know, Mr. Flip Sholler, you're here, do you wanna make a comment or whatever you're willing to?
Sure.
I know you worked real hard on this and I, and like I said, we, we've looked at it every which way we can.
Sure, and so I guess if that's a, would you consider some sort of resolution of support that, you know, we could, I could work with the county attorney based on what we have in place with the city and try and find that language that does fit, you know?
What we have now will not work. And and already the agreement between the city and Hart County, and and as a party there where they were gonna, it states about looking at the city water and sewer.
You saw, you saw a preliminary draft that that was.
But that's. Yeah, that's, that's what we got to go by, that documentation. So that was an issue too, because we just have done our service delivery and.
And that was, that was based on a template. Mr. Leonard, the attorney, was going to have a town, so he pulled it and sent it. And the way he sent it, it was the template, it hadn't been moved. Believe that Mr. Leonard had sent the revised copy, but no, and that was a agreement of Mr. Goran. And he called me because he read in the newspaper about that. No, no, that's not the case. So that's, that's.
And I understand you had gotten, you had gotten Mr. Goran to approve that they supply of water, I understand that. But the documentation that we read is what we had to go by.
Okay.
Most of what I'm saying.
I agree, that's not what's gonna be, that's not what's gonna be, I just got off the phone with Mr. Leonard, he clarified, showed you the email. That was my mistake, I didn't pull that language.
Well, and that's not the only thing.
Right.
That's not, I bet that, that was just one of the things that could have caused some problems.
And I understand, it would come from, if it's not in the city's water service area. That's something I've already mentioned before, that's just happened to be kind of a language that happened to pull, but I understand, it's not an only issue. I guess what I, to the extent that that draft, I don't know, that's actually, could there be some other form of resolution support, which is a pretty standard request for these types of developments? If that doesn't speak specifically to the law, I know that is, that's kind of the hot button, and that's fine. And it's, it's, it's really just to carry it through to the point where, obviously, we can't do anything on that property. City won't let it, you know, it all has to happen through the process. So saying that, it would, it would really just be, apparently showing up on the paper. It would support the application to the big concern that, okay, this doesn't apply. And we know that we can't do anything if it's in the county, because we won't be able to, to cross court. So nothing will happen until after that happens. This statement would, would nearly be to show that, hey, this isn't a concern.
But you can't use any kind of annexation language in this, in this agreement. Because I spoke with all the commissioners, they're, they're, they're good with annexing for most part.
Right, there's, there's some issues with that.
Yeah.
Because we don't have, we don't have a survey, we don't know where that's gonna be.
Not cycling.
This is probably, we already have a major development across the road, almost a park. There's gonna be a traffic study. So it's my understanding that Oakley Crossing is gonna be doing something similar, possibly. So there's gonna be a tremendous amount of traffic since the unplanned, like Hartle, is already the city in annex. Then we got this other situation with possibly a hundred and a half more doors.
Of course.
Oakley, which feeds into Hartle, and then also this problem, so.
I just, this is the technicality, I told you, this is a survey that I saw of Oakley property. Because Billy, because Billy Kid Williams, he owns the two parcels that straddle Oakley Crossing where it meets Hartle. It's private property, that road is on his land, that's his road. So what you might consider too is all the development is gonna happen on Oakley. He's gonna turn left onto the highway of the city right now. But unless Mr. Kid has an agreement that he's gonna open that road, but it's his. And so the site plan shows it all.
They will allow that road all the way.
Oakley. Okay, okay, I guess for the sake of technicality on the survey that they provided, it doesn't contemplate their, their, their ends there. So I understand, you know the roads, the local roads that people use. But technically, the owners of Oakley, you know, it's not public property. That, that's.
But that's, that's where we're at. I mean, that's very well, good sense of board.
So would there be any consideration of any type of resolution of support?
It would be dead if, if we wouldn't speak in terms of annexation in any kind of way.
Sure, and language is always.
Yeah.
So, and I guess to the extent that as written, it's not something that's comfortable, really to prove. Some kind of more generic or differently worded.
Because we, we, we annex property while under this board law.
Right.
Or prove that.
Sure.
So, and then you would follow the city's regulations, ordinances at that time, once it's annexed. And then that would clear the way for sewer. And also there would be an improvement in there for county water. Like that.
And again, with that said, the understanding is there that, to say that there's an exception that effectively wouldn't mean that it's granted to anyone that benefits from it, more of a statement to show that if there's a concern about moratorium, it's gonna be. And so it wouldn't, it wouldn't benefit in the sense that we're, a loophole of moratorium, because it will happen when, you know, once it's in the city. And so that's why I tried to express in here that, you know, the transfer survived anything, if it's not awarded, then, you know, this thing is all been in the wind. So there's no concern that anyone's gonna benefit from it. What I'm calling an exception to moratorium is, it's really just to be on paper to show that if it comes back, it's like, oh, we, we read that there's this. I can say, oh, I'm. So if that's the concern, it's not gonna, no one, no one is gonna benefit from it. What this exception is, is.
Well, that's what we have to go by, it's what's on the paper. But it, it, another thing is, other commissions have stated that it wants no site plan. And and we're kind of, if we, if we go along with this, we're kind of open the door for future developments that are coming here and ask for permits. And then, you know, at that point, they're not required to give us a site plan. If we approve something like this without a site plan, then here we go. I mean, we both absolutely.
Is that not, I mean, I know it's not an architectural drawing, but that's.
Something to scale.
That is a scale, absolutely a scale.
What we needed in the survey, is we, we don't need to make sure that the requirements to annex about law follow it. One, is it continuous, I think we can answer that one, I think. Second question, if it might go on to the cities, does it create an uncoordinated?
A lot of, that's a lot of.
I don't know that, I agree.
Okay, that's the point we're trying to make.
Okay. Because I know we're gonna have to.
But your question is, can you speak from this, in five minutes? Sure, if you can kind of open the resolution that we all agree to, I mean, I've got it up in my mind, I mean, we'll listen. If there's something that out there that wouldn't work, I'm willing to do it.
And then that's, my understanding is that for the long term, emails have some had issues. And so when I initially sent draft, which I mentioned, well, hey, I know county attorney will want to provide on this to make sure that it gets into what, you know, protects and looks out for the county's interest. And so it wasn't until we tried, I think, that I had to do that, you know, how this needs to be. So I, I kind of put what, what I knew that, that the whole report basically is, I should start out what I'm looking for, but it couldn't be, couldn't be rewarded in a way that.
Wouldn't be there.
Right. We saw on X, right? So that's, you know, the initial understanding with the, for the road conversations was that there was a concern about the city sewer. And that's why the city council meeting was out, not why it's out, but that's why I went to the council meetings to ask how can we come to an agreement on this? And they said, yes, we're willing to agree. And that's what I've been doing, you know, I understand what it was, that it's coming here with, with that type of agreement, obviously. It's a, I'm gonna head it up, so the final draft, I'll have it in my pocket, because I'm just before I can hear. But I have the frame that here, I was hoping that would, maybe it's like a sound, but since then, we've been starting to revert it. So that's the kind of, some of our here is I'm trying to keep up, to do everything that you're asking. I'll say my.
Does the city gonna have a call meeting to approve that?
Maybe, maybe, well, I think actually, you're.
How's it?
Right, June first, I'm sorry.
So I have to do that, so I have to do your deadlines.
Uh, correct.
I don't have a problem having a call meeting if y'all can work something out against that. And I think the city's got their, their stuff approved.
Those documents we have to sign.
Yeah.
If this board, they got a, a agreement, but there, there's no document.
To show you the draft, to tell you where we're at, I get it. That's like, okay, and everything changes after you agree with it. I don't want that, you don't want that, and that's not the point of why I'm here, I'm trying to offer it. And I know I offer here, I'm not trying to cram anything in this.
I'm just offering that up, that I think, you know, you can get something worked out, and get something received.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with a call meeting.
Right, and that's, I believe we're at that point where it's, it's in the, it's in the paper, but, um, you know, again, the, to the, to the extent that you're cautious about adding any language about moratorium.
We can't, we can't modify the moratorium. I mean, we can't change it in the county.
Understood, so. And that's, I guess, to the extent that that's not something they can fully continue.
So is no resolution and no action by the board, does that confuse you more so? I mean, I'm just, I'm just.
Asking.
An option, or? And the reason I say that is, if we're gonna, if there is gonna be a document, whatever y'all get together to do, let us have it two days ahead of time before we have a call meeting to give us. And the reason I say that is, if we're going to, if there is going to be a document, whatever y'all get together and do, let us have it two days ahead of time before we have a call meeting to give us a chance to review it.
Of course, and I think if the very baseline, if we can agree to do, as a standard of resolution support, I don't know how often, I know the last one was $2,700, I changed it before. I don't know if I have, you know, if we have, like, these orders or anything that come through, I guess, I don't know if they can see it, so.
The commissioner, Dorsey, was underwhelming aboard in 2007, so it was a board.
I don't know what she was doing before.
Right, so, but, yeah, if you, if, uh, Ms. Kim agrees that something that can be worked out, and y'all can work something out, I would be glad to have a call meeting or, you know...
With a very basic, um, maybe just a lighter support, only two, that's just corporate language that allows for that. Because the resolution support is always very strong, autonomous, aren't part of it. And so to include it, um, this generally, it's not a different thing. So, at the very least, to do that, I guess, you love on asking for a decision. But with the ability for us to try and work in language that accommodates what will be this final agreement with the city. And like that said, structure where it's certain that what is in the resolution is buttressed by what's in that agreement. So that it tells them that they have the handling, that it's going to be...
And Ms. Kim's aware of our stance of where we need to be with that. So, she'll be able to answer any, you know, and I feel accomplished that she says this resolution's good to go, and bring it, we'll have a call meeting to vote on, you know, at that point. So, we should take it, no action, no action, no action.
Okay. Once, once it's available, I'll be able to do this anytime, if I'm getting those.
We got to get a little more off our notice.
Yeah, first, first, most of them go out here.
As seen as me, as we all, we all have full-time jobs.
I can maybe help scout that.
I feel like I've got two full-time jobs, I have to back to back, so.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right. Uh, move on now to UBS, job description address, for it.
Basically, what we took from all the positions, and we tried to kind of find an active job description, just to start, but the deeper the tax going to be due, the more themselves working on it. We need approval, so we have to, internally, get somebody to fill in the position.
I don't have one question, I read through all that, well, do you know the pay grade off top, do you know the pay grade off top?
It'd be same whatever, but I should have put that on there, but the pay grades might not change in the current position.
We had, we had complete permits. And also, that's the starting place in issuing permits as well, transportation permits, you know, the permits. But we try to find out.
But issuing permit?
I mean, that's, it should be a bullet point, issues, transportation permits, building permits. See, also, that information was submitted, you're aware of that.
Correct.
Correct. That means that I'll be part of that.
Once these work orders are completed, do they give back to, do they give back to this person?
Yes.
Uh, it'd be nice if they said, they said something here about the annexing completed or something like that. I know we've always talked about that. There's a way that's...
We need, we need to update the whole system where they ain't got to dig through boxes of paper to find, but, yeah, they are careful about...
Is this new software maybe be a saver in this?
It may be, we're talking about, then let's talk to them and see if they got a component we can add to it that will do this. I know they have a permitting component.
You know, it may be to just shoot an email to the commissioner that district involved, is that what you're telling me?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah. But we, wait, can we get this done?
House plan?
But as far as, is this person actually having time to email that commissioner every quarter, something?
Right.
Anyway, I'm just going to be honest with you.
There's a lot going on. I agree. Okay, is any other ideas or?
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
I made a motion to approve the job description with those additions and qualifications.
Okay, got a motion back from Mr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second back from Mr. Teasley, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on the paper, it's four of the eight. So, we'll move on to EMS request for purchase of addition equipment. And we have our EMS director, Mr. Mike Adams here tonight, and he'll be explaining the needs of EMS.
Uh, we want to, we want to add, we've got another campus we want to add for our fleet, big element out back, so we're bound to get it up and running. Uh, we need a cardiac monitor to go on it, and also need a cot, stretch for that truck. Uh, cardiac monitor for home, over forty thousand dollars. Uh, and the stretchers are going to come down now. But what I would really like, what I'm asking tonight, I'd like to do is, we, a couple of years ago, we bought four new cots, the power dead cots, that say the bats and all that. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and get five right now, go ahead and place the other four that did not place them, those have worked out great, staple up them. Certainly, add them to that, stretchers plus one cardiac monitor.
I made a motion to approve the request that's made here. We're talking about local monies that will be funded by the ARPA fund of $170,000, and that's for five stretchers. Uh, and the cardiac monitor, that forty thousand dollars. Thanks, thanks. But everybody, that's your door, I think. But, uh, any discussion? Hey, we appreciate our EMS here in Hart County.
We should come in.
We, we want to provide them with the resources they need, and, you know, and if you may not understand, these stretchers, they got lifts on them, so they don't have to strain their backs. And, and a lot of times, you know, all our EMS people don't bench press for five hundred pounds or something, and so are small people. And it takes that help to get these folks loaded into an ambulance lot down there.
Well, the way these were designed, the two people that were normally lift the cot, both of them can get on the end, and get the buck, and raise the legs up, and you go on to do that.
Right, so, we got a motion, any other discussion? Now, we'll call for a vote on the paper, it's four of the eight. All right, we also got a, Mr. Adams, you want to do the...
We've got a, uh, former hire, new hire, one that, uh, right down there at EMGA, for them paramedics, so, uh, they've been have ten years' experience. And I give them at least what we normally do, give them eight years, just give them five, go to six, make them even number. Let them come in after six years. I looked at it, and I've got something else on the phone that I just know about.
I made a motion with Randy, that's, you know, policy, maybe technical, on that.
Got a motion back from Mr. Dorsey, second back from Mr. Teasley. I'd like to Harrison, over there.
You too.
I agree too. Uh, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on the paper, it's four of the eight.
Thursday, we're going to leave, go get a new ambulance, so we're getting a note, so coming in, we'll place, we'll place one or four hours.
We'll get that.
We'll try. So, that's moving forward a little bit too. Thank y'all.
All right, for that, thanks Mike. All right, uh, next on the agenda is recreation basketball scorekeepers paid, I think we wanted to go from ten dollars to seven. Oh, seven should have ran that, I'm sorry.
Basically, what this is, uh, they have found a foundation, I believe, is, uh, for exercise equipment, stuff like that. A good part of it, no matching fees, no matching money to it, it's a hundred percent grant, if they get it. Uh, they just need approval to apply for an accounting name.
I didn't see any where... Back to Mr. Dorsey, second back to Mr. Teasley, any discussion?
Well, it is, I didn't see any where in there for the green label.
Well, it's a very, up to, I think, I remember right, it's up to fifteen thousand dollars.
I didn't see any effective of that.
That's all. I don't think it works.
Probably did my half of that.
This is credit.
And no cost to the county.
No cost to the county, that's the point, I know.
Got a motion back from Mr. Dorsey, second back to Mr. Teasley, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on the paper, it's four of the eight. And now, we'll move on to, uh, recreation basketball scorekeepers paid, I think they were making ten dollars a game, and they're wanting to increase to twelve dollars a game. I'm like, that would be, if they're on a game. Good second. I'm gonna second back to Mr. Dorsey, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on the paper, it's four of the eight. All right, then we'll move on to recreation U title football fee increase. It's a little, the F D L family, well, they're being charged, Hart County's the lowest going on there, it's sixty-five dollars. And we try our best to make our recreation facilities economical for all people of the county. But there comes a time where these expenses, uh, we have to make an increase. And I think it's been reported that each child, it costs a hundred and four dollars for them to play football overseas. So, and they're sitting here at sixty-five dollars, and they've asked for a decrease of to ninety dollars. Thought you could look back and see the difference of their payments. Yes. Here, West Halls at three hundred dollars, and they have five health, shoulder pads, jersey pants, and practice pants. Uh, we provide them shoulder pads and jersey, uh, anything, so... So, they're asking to increase the price to ninety dollars, which I don't think is unreasonable in our economy and the way things are at this point, so.
I know nobody wants to do it, but we need to increase, so I might come up with a price of ninety dollars.
And second back to Mr. Dorsey.
Same.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on the paper, it's four of the eight. Okay, next on the agenda is the recreation commission to apply for five hundred thousand dollars, L W C up grant. I'm going to be honest with you, when that came through our, um, office here, I thought it might be a good idea for the rec department. We'll get, we made a motion and send it to the RECA advisory committee. Uh, I was thinking, on the more terms of, you know, if there were light bulbs that needed to be replaced, or those sorts of things, is what my view was. Because this is not a free grant, it's a matching grant. And, uh, and, you know, if they're coming up with a plan of whatever fixing lights, or building buildings, or fences, or whatever, that's my avenue of that. Now, RECA advisory board, they had a different avenue, you want to explain?
Uh, the RECA advisory board, uh, recommended that we go with this, uh, to try and start, um, Hart County, uh, to build a rec center. Uh, we are the only county, uh, anywhere around us that does not have one. And, uh, no recommendation.
Okay. And I understand that, but at this point, we have got a one point one million dollar payment to do for a jail. I know that this has been put off for time and time again, but this is really a bad time to kind of go into that. Because, uh, we're trying to figure out a way right now not to raise the ministry rate, because of that one point three million dollar, um, payment on the jail.
The only issue to that is, if we apply for that, and we have come up with a match, just one step there, you know, I don't want to do anything. And I'll be honest with you, you probably feel the, the grant, you don't feel what you're doing during the process, or you're the diamond of the grant.
And I, I, you know, and it's not that we're neglecting our reform. I don't want to be known as for neglecting a reform, but I, uh, still also feel responsibility to taxpayers, the needs of a jail here in this county has been... And it hasn't went on too long also. And I know there's a need for a community center, or an activity center, or whatever. And, uh, but we've got to get behind this jail for us, I'm just being honest. Anybody?
Just one that nobody wants to do, but, I mean, we have been avoiding raising the ministry rate. And, you know, when you talk about a half a million, that makes taxpayers, that's what, is what, it's not been good here, going along together.
Anybody else have, I know we've got some RECA advisors here, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to. I mean, we're not saying no, but we can't right now.
We don't believe it's a way.
No, actually, yeah. Do you have any other comments, Jim? Thank you.
I'm totally brought out of here, I don't think.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is recreation A six U title football to our program. And I think that's going to, um, that would have to be next year, okay? Uh, and that would be within this league, that would be in the league that we're in now, in that. Okay.
There will be costs involved in that, uh, that will be included if you replace it. But if we say, say we have one team, or twenty kids on it, we can't just go buy twenty helmets. We're going to have to buy several more helmets, so we can fit those kids accordingly. Uh, you got to save sure kids that are, have like, five or eight dollars, and I don't want to put a kid out there with a helmet on because they're dead.
There's nothing.
Have you got a call to?
Um...
You have another question?
I had it in the minutes, our minutes, I think you guys have, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it.
There's been a lot of interest in doing this.
Um, this was the recommendation from the RECA advisory board. Uh, I won't know if there's enough interest until we do a re- reservation, I'm going to registration.
I don't think that's a problem.
Come up to me and ask.
The reason, the reason I ask that, is the last thing you want to have, tell them, you can sign up, and I have to pay, that's my question.
You really won't know until you do a registration. And it goes like that with every one of our programs, each year, we don't know if we're going to have, be able to deal with a team in D J group until we do the registration.
And if there's not, then I still go back to play football, I mean, that's still, so. I'm pretty young, uh...
I don't think you're going to do it.
Yeah. I made a motion to add any distinction, um, type of football, for, for...
I get it, say.
For twenty, twenty four. Yes. Yeah. All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on the paper, it's four of the. All right, then we'll move on to Temporary Career Line Permit of Hart County's Human Society. This is basically the same thing that was allowing Hydrate to do at the K O E camp ramp, and, uh, Gerald says everything checks out here, things are, everybody.
Just so, just so, those, it has to be a five oh one C three organization that applies to these persons, individuals can't do it, so that kind of assures, like, like they have to, that they're the five oh one C three, they're the benefit, the dollars kind of stuff, they're playing it in order.
I make a motion to look through this question.
I get it. All right, most particularly, we're approving temporary permit and, uh, Mr. Bennett, second, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on the paper, it's four of the. And next, we have on the agenda for public comment, and if we do have any one for public comment, I would remind you that it is about county business, not to, uh, taking a shot at a commissioner or any of those sorts of things, but if you've got county business, we would love to hear from you, but other than that, we ask you to keep your sleep, if you don't have county business with me.